Today's meeting was noticed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This commission acts in review and recommending capacity for comprehensive plan amendments, tax amendments to the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations ordinance, rezonings, and plan developments. The commission has decision-making authority on road name change requests, public project reviews, appeals of administrative decisions on final plats and subdivision matters, as well as other matters pursuant to Chapter 29, Title VI, Section 6-29-340 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended. If you wish to speak today, you should have signed in before you came in. And so, let me introduce myself. I am Cindy Floyd. I am Chair. To my right, we have Pete Palatas, Luke Morris, Gary Lassane, and Adam McConnell. To my left, we have David Kent, Warwick Jones, and Susan Cox. Warwick Jones, excuse me. To my right, Commissioner and Attorney Mark Bell. And to my left, Joel Evans, Director of Zoning and Planning. And Joel, would you please introduce your staff?
Sure. Andrea Melisagui, the Deputy Director. Marsha Miller, she'll be presenting today. Wynne Carlisle, he will be presenting today. Chris Cohn with our subdivision part of the planning department, he will be presenting today as well. Stephanie Ondo, Monica Eustace, I saw Kerry Vache in the back there, and Tamara Avery, who's in charge of subdivision. That's it.
All right. In order to get a good recording of the meeting for the minutes, please speak loudly and clearly into your microphones, and please do not talk over one another. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the July 14, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
I have, I will not be here.
Okay, so I wasn't either.
Okay.
Neither was Susan's.
So, it's on here. Send these.
Was it on there?
Okay. We need to check. So, we will make those changes and bring it back.
Okay. All right. Commissioner? Do we need to have a vote, or do you have to bring that over?
I will. For the approval with the subject of the changes.
Yeah. Second.
Okay. All right. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lassane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
I wasn't here.
Are you abstaining? Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Staying.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatas?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
What's that?
The eyes have it.
It was on there. Apologies. She was correct. It was a breeder. It was awful.
Oh, okay, Kent. So, the history.
It was under Tany, send these.
Yes. All right, so we're good.
We're good.
Yep, we're good.
Apologies.
Apologies.
Accepted. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is ACP-06-25-00125 and ZLDR-06-25-00134, a request to amend map number 3.1.7.A, Johns Island Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay Zoning District and map 3.1.7. B, Johns Island Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay Zoning District Infrastructure and Connectivity Map of the Comprehensive Plan, and map 5.3, Johns Island Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay Zoning District, and map 5.3.A, Johns Island Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay Zoning District Infrastructure and Connectivity Map of the ZLDR, to change the zoning designation of TMS number 313-00-00-179 from the limited commercial designation to mixed-use designation. Staff presentation, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Floyd and Commissioners. So, this slide describes the administrative deferral and just gives the reasoning why we're looking at this again today. As Chair Floyd said, this is, this request is Comp Plan Amendment 625-125 and ZLDR Amendment 625-134 to change the designation of tax map number 313-000179 from limited commercial to mixed-use designation within the Johns Island Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay District. So, for the zoning history in the 90s, the subject property had a low-density residential zoning, which continued in the 2000s after it was made part of the Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay Zoning District. In March of 2021, the Johns Island Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay Zoning District was adopted, and the property was designated limited commercial within it. So, limited commercial is intended for lower-intensity commercial and residential uses than the mixed-use designation, and for limited commercial to serve as a transition to the So, mixed-use allows for higher-density commercial and residential uses. It looks to accommodate different types of uses to facilitate alternative modes of transportation and have residential units above non-residential space. And so, if the request is approved, all uses allowed in the mixed-use designation but not limited commercial would become available. This includes multifamily dwellings, hotel, motel, parking garage, gasoline service station, et cetera. Approval would also see density changes from the current six units per acre to eight units per acre with a, if there was a 50-foot right-of-way dedication, approval would raise density from 12 units per acre to 19. And the last bullet here states again the reason for the case appearing at this meeting with the administrative deferral. Here's the location of the property and the county as a whole. And the future land use designation for the property is overlay, is the overlay zoning district maps as they currently exist. And this is the current Comp Plan map of the overlay district, showing where the subject property is within it. And this is the proposed amendment to the overlay district map in the Comp Plan reflecting the subject property changing from limited commercial to mixed-use. And this is the current Comp Plan Infrastructure and Connectivity Map. And this is the proposed Comp Plan Infrastructure and Connectivity Map reflecting the subject property changing from limited commercial to mixed-use. So, for the current zoning, the subject parcel has frontage along Kane Slash Road, contains a single-family residence. The adjacent seven parcels to the west contain single-family residences and mobile homes and a vacant lot, and are zoned in the overlay district with a limited commercial designation. The two parcels to the north contain a single-family residence and a tree services company, and are zoned with the mixed-use designation in the overlay district. The parcel to the east contains a single-family residence and is zoned in the overlay district with a limited commercial designation. And the parcels across Kane Slash Road to the south contain homes and are zoned R4, low-density residential. So, this is the current overlay zoning district map in the zoning ordinance, the ZLDR. And this is the proposed amendment to the ZLDR overlay district map reflecting the subject property changing from limited commercial to mixed-use. And this is the current overlay zoning district infrastructure and connectivity map in the ZLDR. And this is the proposed amendment to that overlay district infrastructure and connectivity map in the ZLDR reflecting the change from limited commercial to mixed-use. The subject properties in Flood Zone X. Here's an aerial view to the north and to the south. These are photos of the subject property and photos of adjacent properties. This is a comparison of land uses between the current and proposed designations. The ones in bold on the right show uses allowed in mixed-use but not allowed in limited So, for the approval criteria, these are the criteria for Comp Plan amendments, which may be approved if council determines the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall purpose and intent of the Comp Plan, and that one of the listed criteria here is And this is the applicant's response to Criterion C. And this is the staff recommendation, which is approval since Criteria C and D may have been met. The Comp Plan overarching theme six emphasizes for growth to occur within the urban growth boundary where infrastructure and services are already in place. Also, the Comp Plan recognizes the need for mixed-use development and a variety of housing types that are affordable and located near existing infrastructure. And since they may have been met, we recommend approval. This is the criteria for zoning amendment, zoning text amendments, and which may be approved if council determines the following criteria are met. This is the applicant's response to Criterion A, and their response to Criterion B, and lastly, their response to Criterion C. And the staff recommendation is if the Comp Plan amendment is approved, staff recommends approval of the ZLDR text amendment. And this is the Planning Commission recommendation from the July meeting. And this shows the public input for both the July meeting and this meeting today. And the meeting was noticed as required. And that concludes the presentation.
I have a question about the, the public input. So, for the last meeting, it was 193 comments, and so, this 129 for this meeting, is that in addition to the 193?
In addition, correct. Any further questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. As it pertains to the current zoning, a commercial guest house is allowed. What's the size density for that commercial guest house?
Well, that, it's a short-term rental permit type, which allows for short-term rentals 365 days a year. So, it's more.
Any number of units?
Well, the, each parcel can apply for a short-term rental permit. A commercial guest house, you know, would just need to meet the zoning requirements. But if the, if they applied for the parcel and that use was approved, it would apply for, you know, the entire parcel and however many units they asked for specifically in the permit application.
So, would it still be based on a six-per-acre, or would it be more so like, we've got another zoning whereby, I think a commercial guest house might be stated as 10,000 square feet, a unit that's not larger than 10,000 square feet, something to that aspect?
Sorry. So, all of our short-term rental types have to be constructed as single-family residences. So, you can only construct the number of units that would be allowed by density. And then, once you get that CO, you could come in for your permit to do the commercial guest house, which is only allowed in our non-residential districts.
Got it. So, then it'd be like slightly over 12, thereabouts, where two-plus, two-plus acres.
If it was, depending on what the density was, you'd still have to meet that density requirement. And then, you'd also have to meet the parking requirement as well for the short-term rental use.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, Luke?
Yeah, you actually answered one of mine, because I saw the commercial guest house as well. So, just want to make it clear, clarify it. Multifamily is the only zoning category that residential can be attached to anything that is non-residential.
Yeah, I believe, let me get back to, here we go. Yeah, so the multifamily, like you said, it's allowed to be above commercial.
Okay.
Exactly. So, that, like, that use, that multifamily use.
And then, my last question is, there are City of Charleston plats nearby, but none of them are, appear to be adjacent. So, annexing is not really an option at this point, anyway.
Correct, not at this point.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
What?
Second round.
Okay, one of the speakers, why not?
We had quite a few people sign up. Yeah, that was tricky. We'll start with Philip Simmons.
Are you the applicant?
I am.
Okay, and you asked for five minutes?
Yeah, I don't know if I need all five, but I, but I appreciate it.
Just let you know, you got five.
Okay.
That's it.
My name is Philip Simmons, and I live at 3670 Old Charleston Highway on Johns Island. My family's been a part of the Johns Island community for almost 90 years, and we still live there today. So, when we, when we ensure any changes are, we want to ensure that any changes are positive to the island. We own the small 2.39 parcel of acre at 2856 Kane Slash Road. We're here today to request zoning change from limited commercial to mixed-use. My family has no immediate plans for development. We would likely develop land ourselves or lease it, so we'd have better control over what goes in. Mixed-use zoning brings many benefits, including job creation, economic growth, increased county tax revenue, and reduced suburban sprawl. It also provides a flexible, flexibility to create something special, blend of units, small businesses to serve the neighborhood, and a much-needed housing for the hospital staff that's coming at Trident. With a new Trident Hospital coming soon right down the street, housing will be crucial. If we don't provide housing nearby, employees will have to drive from James Allen, Somerville, or other places to get to and from work. So, that, I would add to the traffic congestion. So, what we're saying is we can build some retail with some residential above to maybe house some of these new medical employees that are going to be coming in, would actually alleviate some traffic concerns. So, and we just think that's a winning solution. Our family's been here, like I said, for almost 90 years. We're a very small company, a little small business. We're not a giant developer coming in. So, we're concerned about the community also, and we would really appreciate approval on this. Not five minutes, but that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Pam Skinner? And Wynne, we'll go to the two-minute timer now and make sure, because I don't think it counted down.
That one's counting down.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Pam Skinner, and I'm 1437 Fairview Plantation Road.
Did you get closer to the mic, please?
I'm 1437 Fairview Plantation Road on Wadmala Island, and I'm here representing the Johns Island Task Force today as their third or fourth string speaker, because the other two were unable to attend. And so, what we wanted to clear up or bring to your attention today are two misconceptions that we feel have been raised by the committee and a commission in a prior meeting. And the first misconception we feel is that if a parcel is within the urban growth boundary and is on high ground, that it should automatically be allowed to be upzoned. This concept does not appear anywhere in the Comp Plan or ZLDR. Indeed, if this were council's intent, then we wouldn't be here today. Instead, council has asked you to judge this case based on individual merits, and the individual merits of this case are that the upzoning on a dirt road and nearby the most congested intersections of the island does not justify upzoning. And the second misconception that we would like to bring up is that the proposed Comp Plan change meets one, Comp Plan change meets one or more of the criteria in Section 3.2.6 of the ZLDR. This is not the case. Criteria C states, events, trends, or facts after adoption of the Comp Plan have changed the county council's original findings made upon the plan adoption, and we stress the word "after." The developer has said this criteria is met, and I quote, "A significant portion and the adjacent property have already transitions to mixed-use zoning, but there have been no changes to mixed-use zoning in the overlay district since the adoption of the Comp Plan." So, this criteria has not been met. Criteria D states that events, trends, or facts after adoption of the Comp Plan have changed the character or condition of an area, making the proposed amendment necessary, and we're emphasizing the word "after" and "necessary" again. Staff stated this criteria may, they said "may" have been met. Staff cites the growth on Johns Island for their reasoning, but this growth is not new. This has been an ongoing phenomenon on Johns Island for decades. Indeed, that is why the Johns Island Overlay District was put in place and incorporated into the Comp Plan. Besides, spot rezoning is an overlay district is never a necessity, thus this criteria has not been met. Respectfully, we ask that you recommend denying the request of changes, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dan Enfinger?
Hi, my name is Dan Enfinger, and I live at 2857 Maybank Highway, Johns Island. My property abuts, the Simmons property on Kane Slash Road. A number of questions came up in an earlier meeting on this rezoning request, and I'd like to address some of those. One member of this committee asked, "Why didn't you join the City of Charleston?" The answer is that the Simmons families are beniars, not comears, having multiple generations of their family living on the properties, all of which are in Charleston County. What do I mean by this? Beniars have been on Johns Island for decades, and almost without exception, oppose the City of Charleston being on the island. Only one major exception to this comes to mind, and he is a former county council member, must be excused, he's a politician. Another concern was the adjacent properties and any plans for that. All the adjacent properties from this property to River Road on the left side of Kane Slash Road have been acquired by two developers, along with all properties on the left of River Road to All Seasons Nursery. These properties have a tacit approval from the City of Charleston for the equivalent zoning to the multi-use requested by the Simmons family. How do I know this? Both the Simmons and I have been approached by these developers trying to purchase our properties. They are working with a realtor whose father develops public grocery store-anchored shopping centers, the most recent at Sommers Corner on Highway 61. So, this may be the future of the corner of River Road and Kane Slash Road. I've discussed privately the opposition from the Johns Island Council and the Coastal Conservation League with both groups. Opposing all applications is not a productive strategy. The groups need to look closely at the applicants and discuss the merit of each in terms of long-term benefits to the community. Someone mentioned that the residents of Johns Island had voted to reject solutions for traffic issues. That is not correct.
Thank you. Your two minutes are up.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Purdy. I'm at 1824 Crab Orchard Road. So, I grew up on Long Island back in the 70s. I was a teenager, back when they were building the Shoreham Nuclear Power Plant. So, one of the things that was interesting about that whole situation is they built the plant, and then afterwards realized there was absolutely no way that they could safely evacuate Long Island through those few egresses that they had off the island in the event of a nuclear situation. Chernobyl had just happened, Three Mile Island, et cetera. I've only been on Johns Island for four years now. We love Johns Island. There's so much character that we love about it. There've been so many projects that have been approved and are building, in the process of being built, et cetera, that are just adding more and more and more congestion. Some of it has been really good, the Boutique Hotel that was approved and, which is eventually going to go in, which has multi-use housing and short-term rental, I think that will be good. The challenge is, is that we're not going to have a nuclear power plant on Johns Island, but we are going to have hurricanes, and we are going to have situations where there's going to need to be mass evacuations. The LOS for that area, those roads in that area, is already at a, an F, I think they call it an F asterisk, which means that it's, the congestion is so bad and projected to be so bad up to 2045, that we're already at a point where it's going to be impossible for people to, the current population there, to be able to safely evacuate and move about the island. So, I do hope that, and I appreciate the situation that the owners are in, I do hope they, you guys respect the people that are there and the quality of life that we do enjoy on Johns Island. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, are you in favor of it, or are you against it?
Well, thank you very much for asking that. I am against the approval of it.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Tamara Ortiz, and I've been living on the island all my life.
Could you tell us your address, please?
1852 Bluebird Road. And this is going to directly affect my neighborhood or my road, because right now, it's a one-lane dirt road. And we have, I have a grandchild that has to go to the corner on Kane Slash and Bluebird to catch the bus. There's been so much traffic coming through there now, he's almost got hit four or five times, just by people just cutting short going into the, to the dirt road. I've had two or three close encounters myself trying to go out of the road just to try to take kids to where they needed to be and stuff. And we've got kids on that road, and we've got animals, and people just don't care. They just keep speeding down that road, and you can say something to them, and they just ignore you. They think they own the road, and that whatever they claim is it. We had problems with drainage. It took an act of Congress to try to get them to just clean the drainage ditch, because, I'm sorry, but the Simmonses, I was told, were fighting against just putting a drainage ditch in there to get rid of some of the water that's been packed up from all the building where they're filling all the wetlands in. And we just don't want that kind of stuff to where we have more traffic and more danger for the kids and the animals. And that's all I got to say about it. I'm totally against it.
Thank you.
Matt Ponco?
Yes.
Yes.
Good afternoon. I oppose this request simply based on the traffic. I live on 440 Blue Gill Lane. At certain times in the morning, and from about 2:30 on to 6:30 or so, the traffic is unbearable, and it is just ridiculous to try to get out onto River or onto Maybank. Thank you. Thank you.
Al, okay, yeah, thanks. If you could say it for me so I could know how, what it is, that would be great.
Good afternoon, my name is Al Girazzo. I'm a former New Yorker. I had your children in silverware. We've been down here for the better part of about a year and a half now. I really, really loved it. But I have to admit, traffic on Maybank and River Road and Kane Slash Road is ridiculous. If you plan on putting this building up, I've been, I found like Pine Land's road, I actually get on, actually, people actually yield to you so you can make a right-hand turn without, you know, nailing you. Like you said, basically, I'm a New York Polack. Man, a few words, most of them are four letters long, but I'll try to keep it clean. I mean, I love it, I love it. But trying to get down Kane Slash Road between business traffic, people going to work, and school traffic, it's ridiculous. I think if you add any more stuff there, it's just, it just does not make any sense at all. It's getting brutal. It's getting worse and worse. I mean, I love, I love this place. I've been coming down here for the better part of five years. My granddaughters lived down here for seven years. Great place, great people. Now, if they only get people to learn how to use turn signals and yield a right-of-way once in a while and not speed, it'd be so much better. But that, that's beyond, beyond, beyond a try. It's just entirely too much building. Eventually, it's like putting 10 pounds of manure in a two-pound bag. It's really getting nuts. It's getting crazy. Is it necessary to add these, all these buildings? I mean, you're going to put in apartment buildings? That means you're going to wind up with two cars for every, for every patron there. And it's just going to get progressively worse and worse. Okay? Thanks for bearing with me. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Susan Kershaw?
I'd like you to recommend disapproval of this upzoning.
Could you tell us your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Susan Kershaw. I live at 3605 Berry Hill Road on Johns Island. I believe this upzoning would not be consistent with the comprehensive plan, so meeting any of the further criteria is irrelevant at that point. And since zoning stays with the property, there is no guarantee that additional housing is going to be built. It could end up just making things totally worse. Couple of things were brought up last time, Commissioner Lussein. We voted against the 526 extension because it was controversial and questionable whether it would solve any of the traffic issues, yet it used up most of the money that might be available for the foreseeable future to solve those issues. And Mr. McConnell, I agree with your thinking that Charleston needs to more aggressively, more aggressively approve denser housing on our high ground. But we can't do that in an irresponsible way. And right now, if we allow the by right growth currently for Johns Island, traffic is going to be dangerous. And so any upzoning, I think, is irresponsible at this time. Please deny this and perhaps allow some time in the future when it might actually make more sense.
Thank you.
Donna Snyder?
Hello, my name is Donna Snyder. I live at 1878 Pine Land Drive. I live on the corner of Pine Land and Kane Slash. We have three neighborhoods, two apartment complexes. Traffic is horrific. We were just approved for 16 houses across the street. I oppose this. We need no more businesses. We need no more houses. The hospital can find somewhere in those neighborhoods to live. It's horrific. We need nothing else. Our land is being stolen from the, by the city. So we have nowhere. Getting in and out of our neighborhood is horrible, horrible. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Darrell Snyder?
I live at 1878 Pine Land Drive, Johns Island, same as the wife. And biggest thing is, I don't own a comprehensive plan or anything for this place. It says it's going to have a walkable way of going in and out or anything there for people to go down. Right now, it's like my sister said, it's a one-lane road. Dirt road at that. And the width of the property and stuff will not permit for walkways, a road, you say a 50-foot zone for traffic to go down through. I'll see how that's going to happen and you have 19 within there for possible per-acre units. Now, if you do that and all the housing, as far as the parking, two per household, there's no room for anything on there. Now, if it's come out that it was four and it could be put in there, that's a different story. But right now, would not situate or go through there with all the traffic. I've been almost run over too, too many times on that dirt road and on Kane Slash, Pine Land Drive, everywhere through there. I can't get out of my driveway. It's dangerous. And they say that it'll alleviate and not bring any traffic. Prove it right today, all right? So for that there, if they can prove that they can do it in a sensible manner, that's different. But it ain't as it stands. Thank you.
Gary Worth?
My name's Gary Worth. I live at 2493 Summerland Drive. I got 20 acres off of River Road. I've been in Charleston all my life. I've been on Johns Island for about 40 years. I don't think that, that there's, this is a no-brainer. I don't even know why we have people here to have to stop the development on Johns Island. I mean, come on, we need a break. Probably the majority of y'all up there probably don't even live on Johns Island. I think the young lady in the middle does. I may be wrong, Ms. Floyd, but this is a no-brainer. Between the city of Charleston and Charleston County, the island's gone. I mean, I'm not a tree hugger. I don't love trees. But we got one damn tree that won't let us get off the island. And yet, it got down 40 of them, you know, on the other side of the island. I was, I had a developer come to me and offer me millions of dollars and I went into contract and they were going to build 200 houses on my property. And lo and behold, here comes Elliot Summe. He said, "Oh, hell, no. The airport shut that down." I got shot out of the water. It's just crazy. You need to stop the development, please. The traffic is terrible. I think the man on the end already said he approved it, so we're already in the water now. When's the last time any of y'all have been to Johns Island? Can we see a show of hands? Or is that a question out of, out of line here? Has anybody been down Maybank Road?
I live on Johns Island.
I know you do.
I'm there every day.
I know, I know. But you got to come out there and see what the problem is between the city of Charleston, the tree on Maybank Highway. I disagree with Mr. Phillips. I don't know him. We don't need any more houses. We don't need any more apartments. We don't need anything. What we need is roads. So please, for once, deny this request. And maybe the ones to come.
Brad Taggart?
Brad Taggart, 1633 Jesse Elizabeth Road, Johns Island. It is no secret that Johns Island infrastructure can't handle the development we already have today. We definitely can't handle the development that is currently approved by right. It hadn't even occurred to me what things might look like if we start approving things that currently aren't allowed, like putting an apartment complex on what's basically a country road where the zoning isn't allowed currently. So we are in an infrastructure hole. And the only way you can get out of a hole is to put away the shovel and quit digging. And to approve something like this is like bringing in a backhoe to dig the hole faster. What I find very scary about this application is that the developers are watching. They see these people swinging for the fences, asking for something that isn't currently allowed. To approve a stretch application like this sends a very bad message as to what the county government is willing to entertain in terms of overdevelopment. So I ask you to please turn this down. I hear so many times, "Oh, we can't do anything about it because it's, you know, the zoning says they can do it." Well, the zoning here says that they can't do it as it stands. So I think we need to keep it that way. So please deny. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ellen Silver. I live at 2066 Yutzie Street in the Oakfield Development. And before I forget, I would like to invite any single one of you who do not live on Johns Island to please come spend the night at my house and try and get to work on time with schools opening and everything going on, getting your butt down Kane Slash Road and getting to work on time. Open invitation, call me anytime. I am here not just for myself, but for a whole list of Oakfield residents who work and can't get here at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. And I'd like to read a quote from one of them and then I'm happy to give you the name, all the names. Some of them have the addresses, some of them don't. One of them said, "Developing land on Bluebird Road would compromise the area's natural integrity, increase traffic and congestion on Kane Slash, and turn it into a bottleneck during peak commuter hours. This would not only disrupt the local environment, but also create significant delays as traffic would lightly back up to the traffic circle, exacerbating the problem." I absolutely oppose this development. And if you'd like to, I have two pages. I have 40 names here that are standing behind me.
Are you part of like an HOA or a community organization?
No, no, this is just neighbors who do not want this to happen because they are trying to get to work and trying to get their, their kids to school on time. Many of my neighbors leave their house at 6:00 a.m. to get their kids to school on time so that they can get down Kane Slash and River Road. Come visit me, open invitation.
Thank you.
And the last one, Tori Sanders?
Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. My name is Tori Sanders. I serve as the Communities and Transportation Project Manager at the Coastal Conservation League at 131 Spring Street. The increase in density requested by the applicant is significant in an area where infrastructure is still struggling to catch up. The current zoning already allows for plenty of density and flexibility of use that would be compatible with the surrounding area. Granting this rezoning could also set a precedent that nearby limited commercial parcels could also request an upzoning to mixed use. We recognize that this parcel exists within the urban growth boundary. But even so, not every parcel needs to be mixed use, especially on Johns Island. This will further impact the rural character that Johns Islanders are desperately trying to hold on to. The limited commercial parcels were zoned as such for a reason. The applicant has stated there is no development plan for this for years to come, but we have no way to guarantee that. Once this rezoning is permitted, there is nothing that requires them to wait to construct their mixed-use development until the surrounding public infrastructure has become sufficient enough to accommodate it. The surrounding parcels are single-family residences and a low-impact tree business. A mixed-use development located here does not seem compatible. Neither Bluebird, Bluebird Road nor Kane Slash Road can accommodate this type of density and adding additional pressures on the intersection of Maybank Highway and River Road feels irresponsible. Lastly, this area experiences a ponding effect during average precipitation events, even with Bluebird Road in its current state as a dirt road. Increasing the impervious coverage in this area will undoubtedly exacerbate that issue. While FEMA maps may designate this area as low-risk for flooding, they are not intended to be prescriptive to development. This is a perfect example of how FEMA maps often do not capture the actual conditions of the site, which should be concerning to the commission when such a substantial increase in the potential development footprint is requested. Thank you so much for your time and consideration of our concerns. We respectfully ask that this rezoning request be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Let me ask for a motion.
Yeah, motion and second discussion.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
As before, I will oppose this. I've heard the public, it's overwhelming in opposing this application. I go along, the infrastructure doesn't carry it. And secondly, the comp plan has just been recently completed with a lot of public input and it shouldn't be disregarded. And I suppose one other thing, I guess after the comments of one commissioner last time, comment I would like to make is that in the formulation of the comp plan, we're required to take notice of what the community says. The community, that's the residents of the community. We don't have to regard the future people that might be living in here, living at Johns Island. That's not part of the community. We should listen to the residents, not, "Who did you find? How did you find what the future people might be in that area?" It's the residents, the community that we look to. And frankly, I've never seen such an overwhelming response to an issue from the community to this issue. So as before, I heartily will, will recommend that this not be approved.
When, could I ask you to pull up map 5.3. A, the Maybank Highway Corridor Overlay Zoning District Infrastructure and Connectivity Map?
Sure.
Should be further down. Yeah, one of those, that's great. So when I look at this map, I see that the way it was designed, there are several, there's three nodes for mixed use. They all have egress, direct egress onto either Main, Maybank, or River Road. It seems like there's ample opportunities to have these kind of mixed-use developments where there is the proper egress in supporting infrastructure. When I look at the location of this parcel, I just feel like it has the appropriate zoning. Concern is if we allow this to become mixed use, then why not just have the whole overlay as mixed use? I don't think the infrastructure probably supports even this future zoning as is with the six units per acre on the limited commercial and the eight on the mixed use, but it's where we are. I don't think we need to get even more aggressive with it.
Anyone else?
Adam.
To say that a planning commission should not be taking into account future residents is absurd. It's our job. We are planning for the future. It's a future land use map, which we're evaluating here, the future. We are in the position we are now because we have not done a good job of planning. We have failed the people. We have failed the community because we have not done our job. The politicians have not done their job. The infrastructure people have not done their job. We've failed across the board to provide adequate facilities, adequate housing, adequate transportation, access to education, all of it, right? We're failing. And it's not going to stop. 270,000 people are moving here in the next 20 years. That's equivalent to the amount of people who've moved here in the last 20 years. It's an equivalent of the entire population of North Charleston and South Charleston combined today. Complete doubling of that population. Where are you going to put them? You're going to put 75% of them in Berkeley and Dorchester County, they're going to drive through Charleston County. That's a challenge. We have to face that. We do not have the opportunity, the funding, to provide the infrastructure for that. So we need to be smarter about how we plan for the future in this planning commission so that we can put people where they work and put jobs where people live, close to their schools, in building communities. That's, should be the vision here. We are, cities are not frozen in time. They evolve. We have to find smart ways to, to guide that process on this board. I know that it's contentious. I know that people are having challenges. I feel it myself. And I'm absolutely sympathetic to some of the people who are feeling the pressure from that growth. And it's still going to come. And we can't, doing- And we can't, doing nothing is not an option. So to say that this process only needs to look at what's for today is absurd. This should be looking forward to the future so that my children, my children's children, and their children have opportunities to live, work, and play in our community. Thank you.
Luke?
So I agree with you. We do need more housing. These people, like everyone moving here, we're growing, and that's a great thing, it's much better than not growing. But to me, the issue, well, I'll break it apart. So the first issue is whether or not the comprehensive plan is essentially outdated. And I would say that it's not, just based on the approval criteria. So essentially saying that events or trends have changed since we adopted a couple of years ago, the most recent comprehensive plan change. I don't agree with that. And like Pete said, these are nodes, three distinct nodes of higher intensity use, with the idea being that within these nodes, hopefully, we can have the density that supports essentially what I call a good density, people being able to walk or use other modes of transportation that aren't just cars, because one of the biggest factors that we've heard today is traffic. I'm on John's Island very regularly, and I feel bad for my family and friends that live on John's Island, having to commute to and from the island to get to work in other places that they like to go. So the idea being that you can have more things closer to you, more at your fingertips, so that you don't have to keep relying 100% on vehicle traffic to enjoy your day-to-day life. But that being said, if the question is whether or not the comprehensive plan is outdated, I would have to say that it's not. But moving on to a more enjoyable topic of zoning, I think that based on our last meeting, that the applicant, one of the drivers for this change is the ability to have connected residential. And ever since then, I've been kind of obsessing over in the ZLDR that it seems like residential use is the only thing in the ZLDR that it requires attachment or detachment. I'm not sure there's any other use that is like that. You can take other commercial uses and attach them. And being an architect, that attachment from a life safety perspective, generally of fire separation, is addressed. So the ZLDR, in my opinion, is a bit antiquated in still addressing that. And so it would be great to change the ZLDR so that residential attachments could be made to commercial units, so that we could reduce those densities so that people aren't 100% reliant on cars. And if that's the only thing, or only reason, main reason that the applicant would like to upzone, I don't see that as a compelling argument, especially considering that we're talking about the density increase from six units per acre to eight units per acre. Additionally, some of the entitlements under mixed use, specifically hotels and motels, are a bit concerning to me because they tend to be 100% car-reliant, and it's going to directly negatively impact the environment from a good density versus bad density perspective. So for that reason, I'm still going to vote no on this one.
Anyone else?
One more. I just want to clarify also, when I speak of concentrating higher-density development on high ground that's in proximity to major transportation corridors, so I'm not saying obviously go down and find every piece of high ground all over John's Island and develop it, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if you have high ground that is along a transportation corridor, those are areas where I will continually support upzoning because those are the ones, even if the infrastructure's inadequate now, the opportunity to expand that infrastructure in the future is there, and we need to be focused on there so that we're not cutting down swaths of the remainder of John's Island, Wadham, Lons, so forth, right? That's, I just want to clarify that. It's, the caveat is that it's close and in proximity to existing roadways, major roadways. Thank you.
Warwick?
I will still stick with what I said. People that are opposing this plan are not necessarily opposed to growth. As somebody said, if the structure was there, infrastructure was there, they would be more sympathetic to growth. It ain't there. Maybe the system is broken. A lot of this is beyond our control, it lies with the state. And I still say that you would be exacerbating the problem by allowing this application to go through. Yes, infrastructure needs to catch up before we start doing more approvals, but at this stage, please know, I'm total sympathy with the community and pressed by my recommendation to disprove this application.
That's it?
Okay.
Vote. Oh, sorry.
All right, let's have the vote.
On the motion to approve.
Yeah, let's repeat what the motion was to everyone that...
The motion was to approve.
Okay.
Motion to approve staff recommendation. Which is to approve.
Yep. Okay. Commissioner Lassane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Nay.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Kent?
No.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Nay.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Nay.
Commissioner Cox?
Strong nay.
The motion has failed.
Six-two. We don't need to reverse it or whatever.
We don't need to reverse it, do we?
Yes.
I didn't prefer one, because right now, what is the recommendation to the council?
Okay. All right. The motion failed, does someone want to make a motion that might be in the affirmative?
I would make a motion that we disapprove this application.
Call the roll again, please.
Is there a second?
Yes, Pete, second.
Pete, okay. Commissioner Lassane?
Nay.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell? Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Six-two.
I don't have to read about when it goes, okay. Is there a discussion? County Council will hear this request at their public hearing on August 26, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. here in Council Chambers, and again at their September 11, 2025 Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at 5:00 p.m. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at Council's discretion. The next item on the agenda is JREZ-06-25-00163, a request to rezone TMS number 310-06-00-018 and -132 from the neighborhood commercial zoning districts to community commercial zoning district.
Good afternoon. So as stated, this request is to rezone the parcels 3100600018 and 132 from the neighborhood commercial to the community commercial zoning district. In 1994, both subject properties were zoned neighborhood commercial and have maintained that zoning since the adoption of the ZLDR in 2001. There were two past requests to rezone the subject properties from neighborhood commercial zoning to commercial zoning. County Council denied both requests. Here is the location of this subject property when looking at the county as a whole. The future land use designation of this subject parcel is urban-suburban mixed use. Now, both subject parcels are currently zoned neighborhood commercial and are vacant. Parcels to the west contain a single-family residence and are zoned urban residential within unincorporated Charleston County. Adjacent parcel to the south is zoned general business within the city of Charleston and contains a gas station, convenience store, and across Edouard Avenue to the north are two properties. One contains a church and is zoned SR4 within the city of Charleston. The other parcel has SFR, has a single-family residence and is zoned low-density residential R4 within unincorporated Charleston County. Now, across Savage Road to the east is zoned community commercial. It's developed with the CarMax Auto Sales dealership within unincorporated Charleston County. The subject properties are located in flood zone AE and X. And here's an aerial view to the north and to the south. These are photos of the subject properties. And these are photos of the intersection of Edouard Avenue at Savage Road and adjacent parcels to the west. These photos are of the parcels across Edouard Avenue. This slide shows the comparison of all land uses in the current neighborhood commercial zoning district and the proposed community commercial zoning. Uses with a C are allowed with conditions, uses with a S require special exception approval by the BZA, and the uses in bold are only allowed in the zoning district it is listed under. Now, because these subject properties are primarily surrounded by residential zoning and uses, with the surrounding commercial parcels to the south and east having frontage along Savannah Highway with no adjacent residential uses, the development also along Edouard Avenue remains residential. And then additionally, the requested CC zoning district will allow for more intense uses such as truck stops, vehicle sales, vehicle storage, wholesale, buy right, and then conditionally like self-service storage in outdoor recreation and entertainment uses, which are not allowed in the current NC zoning. Criterion A and Criterion B have not been met. Criteria C and D are not applicable. And staff finds that none of the criteria has been met, therefore staff recommends disapproval. Now, prior to the July 14 Planning Commission meeting, one comment was received in support, and no comments in opposition were received. And then prior to today's Planning Commission meeting, two comments in support were received, including a letter of support submitted by the applicant, no comments in opposition were received. This request was requested for deferral at the July 14 meeting by the applicant. And then this meeting was noticed as required.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Any questions for staff? From the commissioners?
We had two speakers, Cassidy Clements, the applicant.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Cassidy Clements, 1626 Cole Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado. I'm here today to talk about the proposal of the expansion lot. This will serve as vehicle staging to alleviate some general site constraints on the existing CarMax site and to reduce stress on the operations team as they're feeling a little constraint on the existing site. No retail operations will be on this site. The current store estimates that they're moving approximately 60 cars a day, so this site expansion will be for that final quality control check. An overview of the site, it is what we call a WIP lot, work in progress. So this is for retail service and cars awaiting shipment. No heavy service operations happen at our CarMax retail facilities, we typically outsource that to different facilities. So as I said, this will be a vehicle staging area. On the site, there will also be a guardhouse for security purposes. The stormwater detention area will be on the north side, and the landscaping buffers to the dissimilar uses will be proposed as well. How we got here, we worked with and collaborated with adjacent property owners through the neighborhood meeting, and then worked with them outside of that neighborhood meeting to alleviate any concerns that they did express. We heard some operational concerns, so we addressed that by connecting the community members with our operations manager on site. They now have the contact information to call the store directly for the operations manager. And since this morning, when we spoke with the operation manager, all concerns had been alleviated, and we find that we've fixed those issues that they had concerns with. So I'm going to turn this over to the next speaker, sorry to call that out. Jacob's going to work with the applicant team.
Yeah. He signed up, so he's right after you on the sign-in sheet.
Okay, well, that's what I have for you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. This would be more of a question for staff. Could something like this actually be handled through BZA? Just based on a restricted use for that lot, for parking, for staging, where the zoning would not have to be changed?
No, the way our ordinance is written, there are certain things that are allowed by special exception and certain things are allowed by right. So special exception for vehicle storage is not an option for the current zoning.
Got it.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. Now Jacob Allen.
Sorry about that.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Allen, and I'm with Maynard Nixon here in Charleston. We represent the applicant in this project. Sorry, my papers are in order here, kind of falling off. So we, first of all, I just want to thank Planning Commission for the time today, and thanks staff for working with us thus far in this project. Maynard Nixon has prepared a letter that was submitted to Planning Commission and included in your packet today. Hopefully, you all have had a chance to review that, but if not, I just wanted to hit some of the highlights of that letter. So we respectfully disagree with the findings in the staff report that the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the urban suburban mixed-use land, future land use designation in the comp plan. We don't believe that the surrounding residential creates any conflict with the goals of the comp plan. Specifically, the comp plan provides that the mixed-use categories intend to accommodate a variety of land uses, including both residential and non-residential, and specifically encourages the mix of uses within this category. The requested rezoning would increase the flexibility of commercial uses allowed within, or on the site, therefore advancing the mixed-use goal of the category. Also, the comp plan does not create any requirement that the commercial uses have frontage along a major arterial road, and then finally, thanks. If I, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions? Pete?
When you refer to this as a staging area, this is where the cars are dropped off or either picked up for transport?
I'll defer to Cassidy for operational questions.
So cars will still be dropped off on the site to the east, and they'll follow the truck route to the north side of the eastern property. So they'll just drive over from the lot. The car carriers will not enter this site.
Okay, thank you.
Say that again.
So the car carriers that bring those massive trucks, they will continue taking Savage Road to the eastern lot, the existing CarMax, and they'll go on the northern... Do you have a site, this site by chance? Wish I had a big map for you to highlight it, but they'll take access...
I'm familiar with the area.
Okay, perfect. So they'll go on the existing site and be dropped off on the existing site.
Okay. So no heavy traffic down Edouard?
Correct. The traffic will continue to take Savage Road to the existing site.
Okay. So Edouard goes into Savage Road.
Right, Savage and Edouard to the west.
This lot is on the corner of Edouard and Savage.
Correct. So the car carriers will continue to take Savage straight into the existing site, they will not go to Edouard onto the proposed expansion lot. The expansion lot really just is for operational staff to utilize, retail will not be going to that site, customers will not be going to the expansion site.
What do you mean by operational staff?
The operational staff will be on that subject site to ready the cars for the sales lot, so just doing minor things to get the cars ready to be moved over to the sales lot, excuse me, for presentation. Do you want to add to that, Bradley?
Anything mechanical?
No mechanical work will be done on this site. So any heavy machinery, any heavy changes and alterations that need to be done to cars, CarMax does not do on their retail sites. We will have a contract or send that to another more heavy machinery operative car repair store. Any repairs that are done on CarMax sites will be like oil changes and simple cosmetic things.
Okay, Luke?
Are there any specific hours of operation for when they would be bringing cars from the main site to the site and vice versa? Because Savage is pretty well-traveled, and the intersections I see being created are a bit convoluted, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Things like that would, I would imagine, be determined at the time of the site review application, because that's when we would submit that transportation impact analysis, and we would understand when the transportation impact analysis, when there were heavy increases in traffic on Savage Road. And so hours of operation are typically determined once we receive that transportation analysis, which comes at the next... which comes at the next stop.
Adam, did you have something?
I'm good, thank you.
Anybody else?
That's it.
Do we have a motion?
I do have a question for staff, actually, real quick. I just thought, thinking about, I know I just stated that I would be supporting upzoning when it's appropriate. The thing that freaks me out when someone says truck stops or other major automotive-related industries, that to me sometimes can be a very strong red flag, especially in communities. And I'm just wondering if there's any, ever been any thought within the community commercial designation to allow the highway-oriented uses to become somewhat of a special exception or some conditional use? Have we ever evaluated that historically or has it been pushed back?
I was trying to understand what you said, Adam. So if this was zoned, community commercial, to having a category, instead of having that heavy truck used allowed by right, having it a special exception?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my fear, like I'm overall, like I'm fine with this. It doesn't bother me, I'm not twisted up about it. But if they were to buy the BP station in front of it, whatever it is, and all of a sudden they put a massive truck stop there, right? All of a sudden that becomes a bigger encroachment into a highway-oriented use into a community that is, for me, my, my purpose for supporting upzoning is mostly housing-oriented. And for amenities. So that's all. I just didn't know if we had that provision or if we ever evaluated it.
No, we haven't had that provision. I haven't, staff has not evaluated that as a special exception for those higher intensive uses. But that does bring the point to, I know the applicant states what, exactly what it's going to be used for, but do realize that in these, what we call straight rezonings from one category to another, anything in that category would be allowed by right with site plan review approval. Right.
Ma'am? That is what concerns me. Once it is, once it is upzoned, it is upzoned. And I worry a great deal about the precedent being set. If we continue to say yes to these upzonings, how do we then say no? And, you know, I agree, you know, we're at housing, we're at affordable housing. You know, that would be a very different thing, in my view. But just another piece of concrete, it doesn't seem like it adds anything to the community. And to upzone for that, I would say no.
Could I address one thing that Commissioner McConnell?
Sure.
So you mentioned about the BP parcel on the corner acquiring that lot. So that, that lot's actually in the city of Charleston, so there wouldn't be much concern about acquiring that lot. In order to develop one property, both of those parcels or all three parcels into one, the, the subject property here would have to be annexed into the city. So just wanted to clarify that.
Where, where are the cars currently staged at? What are you currently using as your staging area?
Sorry for the back and forth, I'll just stay up here. They're currently being staged on the eastern lot, the existing CarMax site. It's just feeling quite constrained with how many cars are being brought in and moved out every day. Like I said, operations estimate 60 cars being sold a day. CarMax.
Hi, my name is Bradley Escobar.
I'm sorry, but you didn't sign up.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from him?
I would.
Sure, okay.
So Bradley Escobar, 12-800-TUCKCO-CREEK-PARKWAY, Richmond, Virginia, from the home office. And currently the cars, the whip area we have on the existing site's currently undersized for the volume of cars we're, you know, moving today. We're parking those vehicles that CarMax owns actually in the customer employee lot. So they're outside of the secured area and taking up those spaces that normally our customers and employees would park in. And I visited the store today and again, it's, it's completely congested. It's very space-constrained and acquiring this parcel would alleviate a lot of those problems and help make, help increase efficiency on site. But I'm here to answer any other questions you may have, just in case.
You know, I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and put it out here. It's, I hear you guys and understand the need for it. I think what we're actually facing here is the need to have a upzone that does not allow us to have restrictions. And, and that's, that's the hard bridge to cross on this one.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Accept staff recommendations and deny the application.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Just really quickly. So I agree with everything that's been said and I struggle with this. And honestly, I don't think that, you know, commercial use should radiate from a node. So it's not, I don't have really any issue for a commercial use extending down Savage. But it's almost like what's been echoed here, if there was some way that, under the CC zoning, we took a better look at how that, what kind of uses can go into that, specifically car-oriented uses. So that's all I had to say.
So we're ready for the vote? Call the roll, please.
Motion is to disapprove per staff recommendation. Commissioner Lusane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell? Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox? The ayes have it.
Okay, county council will hear this request at their public hearing September 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in council chambers. And again, at their September 25, 2025 Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at 5:00 PM. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion. And then that, that's the one.
Yeah. For the next case, I think Marsha will start off by letting us know about some correspondence that we've had with the applicant. And we can let the Planning Commission decide from there. So Marsha, I'll go ahead and let you describe this.
So the applicant has submitted a letter requesting to defer, and I'm going to read it into the record. It says, Dear Charleston County Planning Commission, I would like to defer my application at this time in order to separate the two parcels. Unfortunately, I am ill and cannot attend today's meeting. Thank you for your understanding. Sincerely, William German. When he says that he would like to separate the application, he has two parcels that are under one case, rezoning case number, and he wants to separate them into two separate cases. And that's his request. And if, if you were to approve that, it would come back at the October Planning Commission meeting.
So he's essentially asking for a deferral?
Yes.
And our normal process would, at this point in the process, we usually, we like to have the applicant or the applicant's representative be here in person. He couldn't, he's ill and he couldn't get his representative here. So he did the next best thing, he wrote a letter. So that's where we are.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, that would be great.
Move to deferred.
Call the roll, please.
Do we also want to include the splitting of the?
Yes, it's, yeah. The, the splitting of the case in the, in the vote, yeah.
Yeah, he will split the cases when it comes for, it'll be two separate cases.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lusane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Right, right. And I apologize, I'm sorry, Myra Snipes and Timmy Spanos? Yeah. Yeah, this was deferred. I'm sorry that you couldn't, I know you came to speak, but you'll, you'll have an opportunity in October. Excuse, yeah. Sorry. It's, it's October.
The next meeting is.
It's for October, okay. Yes, thank you. Yes, yes. That's up to the commission.
Since you're here, go ahead.
There were two people, well, there was one person in front of you, if you don't mind. Myra Snipes. I like to go in order, unless the applicant is here. If I'm going to let one person speak, I'm going to let them all speak.
Good day. My name is Myra Snipes Richardson. I live at 2755 Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I was here to oppose the approval of this rezoning of this property, of these two parcels. It's in the front of the Hamlin Beach community from Hamlin Road to Boston Grill Road, where there's significant flooding already on these parcels, especially at the intersection of Boston Grill Road and Rifle Range Road. This area, Mr. German, has three, has a parcel that's already been approved as a RRC zoning back in 2004, against staff approval. And if you were able to see the pictures, he's already using the two parcels that he was requesting to be rezoned as commercial property. One is a storage vehicle area with a barbed-wired fence enclosure. He owns several lots in the Hamlin Beach community and we were concerned that if you allow this upzoning for this property, then he would request other rezoning of other properties and how would that affect our community? Not only our community, the existing communities around the Hamlin Beach area, as in Hamlin Plantation and anybody that's taken that route down Rifle Range Road. Rifle Range Road is a quiet, peaceful, well, not peaceful, because it's a high-traffic area. People are trying to avoid Highway 17. Highway 17 used to be nothing but houses. Now it's nothing but commercial property. So that's why we're asking that you avoid rezoning this property because it does not fit the area character and it would cause significant traffic issues for all of us commuting down Rifle Range Road trying to get home. It would affect the quality of our life. So we are asking you not to approve the zoning.
Thank you.
And now, Timmy, yeah, Spanos, yeah.
Hi, my name is Timmy Spanos and I live at 1606 Aztec Lane in Mount Pleasant, right off of Rifle Range Road. I, I come here as a resident off of Rifle Range, but I also represent two other clients of mine. I'm a real estate agent here in Charleston and they live off of Rifle Range and Hamlin there. And they purchased, actually, within the past year because of the ruralness in the town of Mount Pleasant and plan on, you know, they have two acres, one of my clients, and they plan on a single-family homestead and they love the fact that the historic preservation is there. And as a resident of, off of Rifle Range, I don't believe it needs to be another commercial. I understand it's possibly another gas station. It doesn't necessarily need to be that. Keeping the ruralness, I think especially with the historic preservation, is needed. I have a child with special needs and I'd like to be able to know that the roads that we're on are safer and not congested. It's right down from Lang Middle School and an elementary school. We don't need another commercial gas station on a side road like Rifle Range. I think it's important to keep the historic community there and myself and many other individuals that were behind me oppose the commercialization and rezoning of that piece of property. Thank you.
Do you want to know, are the, so a lot of people wrote in, will those be?
Yes. Well, would they get forwarded to the Planning Commission when the case, if we had gotten to the presentation, it would have been presented?
The next item on the agenda is ZREZ-06-25-00164, the request to rezone, tax map number 179-00-00-113, from the agricultural preservation, AG10, zoning district to agricultural residential, AGR. Marsha?
So this parcel is located off Highway 165 and as stated, it is to rezone from the AG10 zoning district to the AGR zoning district. Now, prior to 2001, the subject property's parent parcel was zoned AG and it was rezoned to AG10 zoning district with the adoption of the ZLDR in 2001. And then in January of 2022, the 64.32 acre parent parcel was subdivided to create a 20.57 acre parcel, TMS 179-0000112. And then in July of 2022, the subject property was subdivided out of parcel ending in 112. And then prior to this request, no other zoning map amendment requests have been submitted for the subject property. This is a copy of the current recorded plat and the plat state, the current recorded plat that created the subject parcel. It includes a note that states the density has been met for TMS 179-0000112 and no further subdivisions is allowed after this plat is recorded. Here is the location of the subject property when looking at the county as a whole. The future land use designation of the subject parcel is agricultural preservation. And the adjacent parcel to the west is zoned AG10. Parcel to the north is zoned resource management. And then the parcels to the east across Highway 165 and those immediately to the south are located in the AGR zoning districts as they were less than 30 acres in size as of April 21st of 1999 and designated as settlement areas with the adoption of the 2001 ZLDR. The surrounding properties are undeveloped or contain single-family homes. This subject property is located in Flood Zone X. And here is an aerial view to the north and to the south. These are photos of the subject property and adjacent property to the west. And these are photos of parcels across Highway 165. This slide shows a comparison of the allowed land uses in the current AG10 zoning district and the proposed AGR zoning district. Uses with a C allow with conditions. Uses with a S require special exception approval by the BZA. And those uses that are in bold are allowed only in the zoning district it's listed under. The request to rezone to the AGR zoning district is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan's recommended agricultural preservation future land use designation, which is implemented by the AG10 zoning district. And the proposed AGR zoning district permits a higher residential density, one dwelling unit per five acres to one dwelling unit per acre than the agricultural preservation future land use designation, which would be one dwelling unit to 10 acres. In addition, this request does not meet Criterion One of the Comprehensive Plan Section 3.1.7A or ZLDR Section 4.9.5, which states parcel size of 30 acres or less on parcels existing prior to April 21st, 1999, to be included as a settlement area. Therefore, Criterion A has not been met. And then additionally, the parcels directly adjacent to the parcel to the north and also to the west are in the RM and AG10 zoning districts. And while those uses allowed in the requested AGR zoning district are similar to those in RM and AG10, the density and dimensional standards are very different. Therefore, this criterion has not been met. Criteria C and D are not applicable. And none of the criteria has been met, therefore staff recommends disapproval. No public comments have been received for this request. And this meeting was noticed as required. That's it.
We had two people sign up to speak and one of them's ready to go. Amy Chico?
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for your time today. I'm Amy Chico with HLA, 29 Lineback Drive, Charleston. Today representing Richard Bell, the property owner, and he is a home builder, local home builder, that is looking to subdivide this property to build one house. It's, the property's only three acres. All the property across the street of Highway 65 is zoned AG, the AGR, which is the, but the zoning that he's looking to zone to. They're all single-family homes. And so he is currently in the process of building one house on the property that he's trying to get his C out in order to move into it himself. And he would like to build in the front portion of the property. In the AGR, you're allowed, I think, 30,000 square foot lot. And he has room to do a little, a little bit larger, but he would like to just subdivide it in order to build one other house. And kind of looking in support or just. in support or just speak upon support, looking at like the Charleston County's Housing for the Future, and kind of the information that is laid out in there, and, you know, Charleston County is in need of 20,000 to 36,000 new dwelling units over the coming decade. The raising house costs are due to inflationary conditions, were also due to a shortage of supply. And then looking further down into the goals and recommendations for the Housing for the Future, one of the recommendations of goal two was to reduce the barriers needed to provide housing supply. And so in this rezoning, a simple rezoning, in order to create one lot, not a multifamily subdivision, not mixed use, just one lot, in order to build one home that would be a for-sale product, that's what our client's looking to do. The buffer, there's a 75-foot buffer that's required along 165 that will be retained, so when you're, you know, won't change the landscape while you're driving down 175. And the property owner, who will speak here in a minute, he did reach out to the surrounding neighbors. I don't think he was able to get in touch with everyone, but there's a few of them that were in support. And, is there any questions?
Any questions for this speaker? Thank you.
Richard Bell.
All right. I'm Richard Bell. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to come here today and request this rezoning. I currently live in Avondale on 21 Riverdale Drive. Future address is going to be 7467 Highway 165 in the back of that piece of property. I'm here to request your consideration on this rezoning. I believe it's a reasonable request. I spoke with my neighbor on the, that owns the John Cordray. Some of you may have heard that last name before, but he owns the property in the dark, kind of drab green color up there, right along my property. And he was in favor, very complimentary of the home that I built there, and commented that it fits the style of the area, and it was in favor of me building another residence. Wish me good luck today. I do not believe that the rezoning or proposed addition of a single-family home in this area, there should be any issue with that. It fits the area that we're going to be in. We're going to be in off of the road with just one single-family home with its own driveway. As we all know, and as Amy mentioned, we need more single-family housing here in Charleston, and I believe this zoning change would be a small step toward, towards filling that need and providing a rural homestead for a family to live in, in a very nice quaint area. So thank you guys for your time today. Appreciate it.
Got a question?
That's it.
Where is your house located? Are you 112?
So 113, in the back. So if you were facing it from 165, back right corner.
There's already a house on the lot.
Correct.
So there's already, and that lot is what size?
Three acres.
You got a house on it?
Right. I built one, right, in the, in the back of it. And then what we're asking is if we can take and peel off an acre in front. And build another home there.
So essentially, if he's. On an overall of three acres.
Correct.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay. Well, do you want to explain to them about how?
Oh, density.
The reason why there's no more divisions?
Yeah. So the parent tract, which is AG10, the current zoning, allowed a certain number of lots per acre, one, one density unit per every 10 acres. So this property has already gone through that exercise, if you will. They've used up all the density in previous subdivisions from the time that AG10 was assigned to this property and all the other properties in Charleston County. So the only way to get any more subdivisions would be to rezone this, this residual of AG10 from previous subdivisions.
So I think Joel and I are the only people that are around that were back at the, when the comprehensive plan was first put in. So that was my question at the beginning. So we've got these larger tracts, and they can be, they can be subdivided. So if it's 100 acres, you could get 10 lots. So what we're actually trying to encourage back then was people for getting smaller lots, you know, they take up nine of them and then leave like one big lot. So this sounds like one of the lots that's left, but it's, we promised everybody then that there would be no more subdivisions. And in fact, we've had some people come back and say, I remember there was one over on John's Island, it said, you know, all the other, you know, all the, other divisions were made, and he had a large lot, and he wanted to subdivide it. But the original tract had already been subdivided as many times as it could be under the original plan, and that's what we have here. So while everything else may make sense, just the overall, you know, the subdivisions have been made, and there's no further subdivisions to be made with this property.
Based on the current zoning?
Based on the current zoning and from the parent tract.
From the parent tract.
From the parent tract of when the subdivisions started on this parent tract.
So you change the zoning, and then you can get one more lot out of it?
If, if the county council approves it.
Of course.
Yes, yes.
But that sort of negates the whole idea of the original, you know, the parent trap, the parent trap, the parent tract could only be subdivided so many times. So you're adding another subdivision, and that's not, in my opinion, that's not fair to the other people who bought property that was subdivided out of this tract.
In effect, you're tearing up a contract, or you're tearing up an agreement.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, just to make a statement. I come back to my concern about precedent. This is well outside the urban growth boundary, and the idea of the urban growth boundary was, of course, to prevent sprawl. And while this doesn't necessarily constitute sprawl, it's the beginning of it. And I think, going back on your word to the other landowners who had larger tracts, is not a good precedent to set. And I think, once it's upzoned, it's upzoned. And I just, I think it's a slippery slope. I would say no.
All right. I think before we can do any further discussion, our attorney has informed me that we need to have a motion and a second on the.
Need a motion? Motion, did you?
To clarify, now, if you guys have a direct question for staff, you are allowed to ask your question. If you're just expressing your thoughts on the application, we need a motion and a second before we can discuss that.
Do we accept staff recommendation and deny?
Is there a second? Got a motion and a second?
Now, David.
I guess my heartburn really is that you've got a tract that's three acres, and you're just going to be putting another house on it. That is not high-density by any means. I mean, it just seems rational that you have that. I don't understand why that would not be work.
Because it's an additional subdivision of the parent tract.
But density-wise?
Pete?
Maybe it's a staff or a mark question, but when I look at the recorded plat, it has the note that says, "The density has been met, and no further subdivision is allowed after this plat is recorded." I mean, does that preclude us from making this change, or is it just a suggestion? It's worded that it says it's not allowed, and it's recorded that way. I.
Right. And that's, that's to clarify, just as what we've been discussing, that the density from the parent tract, from the time that that zoning has been in place since 99, 2000 timeframe, we keep a record, we keep a tracking of all the subdivisions that occur on all the parent tracts in the county. Once that's used up, that note will be put on the last parcel that's created, so that it's clear that it's, it's been used up. And the remedy is a rezoning, which is, goes back to the comp plan, and what the staff will recommend, and what county council has the authority to do.
So it's different from a subdivision. It would have to, it would have to be rezoned, correct?
Right. For the, for another subdivision to occur, it would have to be rezoned.
Is that right?
So, and I'm not saying the applicant would do this, but this is a three-acre property, and they're requesting to go to AGR, which would allow them to have three separate parcels. By rezoning, could they go through and get this approval, have that one-acre subdivision, however it's going to be subdivided? It sounds like essentially what would be one acre. And then the future of that would essentially make it easier to carve out a second, well, what would be a third parcel out of this one.
Yeah. So if it is a full three acres of highland, then if it gets rezoned to AGR, that allows one dwelling unit per acre. So it would allow up to three dwelling units.
And this process, by saying that we're just going to subdivide it once, could make it sound a little more easy for us to swallow, but then come back later to add a second parcel?
Well, similar to what we talked about in the last case, the zoning is the zoning. So no matter what, again, the last case or this one, no matter what is discussed from the applicant, once it's rezoned, everything that's allowed by right under that zoning district is allowed, as long as they meet the development requirements.
And so that's one of my concerns. And then the second question I had was, are ADUs allowed in the AG, or what this is currently zoned, AG10?
Yes, it is, yes.
And so the applicant could, if he just wanted to add a, another residential unit detached, could, under the current zoning, if that was his true intent?
Yes, that is, you could have an accessory dwelling unit. I believe it would be limited to 1,500 square feet, and you would have to have one and a half times the minimum lot size, which this does have, because the minimum lot size is, I think in AG10 is 40, is one acre, so one and a half acres.
The only caveat being that he wouldn't be able to sell that ADU.
That's correct. Well, yes, that's correct. Wouldn't be able to sell it on its own parcel.
Correct. Gotcha. And I understand that we're talking about really small densities here, but there's a lot of property out here, and this would contribute to sprawl if they all did it. And so that's why I'd be inclined to deny the approval of this.
They want to follow the staff's recommendation, is what you're saying? Anybody else?
Going to the vote?
Yep. Call the roll, please.
The motion was to disapprove. Commissioner Lusane?
Based on staff's recommendation, I would vote yea.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yea. Opposing, right?
Yeah.
Yes, means you do not want the subdivision.
What am I voting?
Your motion.
The motion is to disapprove.
Yes.
Am I right?
No, that's true. Yeah. But the way, that's the way we're, we're setting.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, yeah.
I reprimanded.
Trying to keep it low.
Commissioner Kent?
No.
Commissioner McConnell? Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
I'm voting to disapprove, so I say aye.
Right. And the ayes have it.
Did she give me her total?
What was it, 62? Okay, thank you.
County council will hear this request at their public hearing on September 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in council chambers, and again at their September 25th, 2025 Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at 5:00 PM. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion. The next item on the agenda is ZREZ-06-25-00165, a request to rezone TMS number 259-00-00-123, from agricultural residential, residential AGR zoning district to the rural agricultural zoning district, AG8. Mr. Carlisle?
So this is a request to rezone parcel 25900123 from the AGR zoning district to the AG8 zoning district. For the zoning history prior to 2001, the subject property was zoned agricultural general, AG. Because the property was less than 30 acres in size on April 21st, 1999, the property was placed in the AGR zoning district upon adoption of the 2001 ZLDR. In 2025, the applicant contacted staff wanting to establish a landscaping business on the property. The landscaping and horticultural use is allowed in AG8 zoning district with the conditions shown on the slide here. Here's the location of the subject property and the county as a whole. The future land use designation of the subject parcel is agricultural residential. The subject property has frontage along River Road and is vacant. To the west, east, and south, adjacent properties are zoned AGR and AG8, and are developed with single-family residences or are vacant. Properties across River Road to the north are zoned AGR and AG8, and contain single-family residences or are vacant. For flood zones, the subject property is located in the AG10 zone and shaded X. And here's the aerial view to the north and to the south. These are photos of the subject property and the adjacent parcel 034, and photos of the adjacent parcels 121 and across River Road 087. So this slide shows the comparison of allowed land uses in the current AGR zoning district, which allows for one dwelling unit per acre, and the proposed AG8 rural agricultural zoning district, which allows one dwelling unit per eight acres. Uses with a C are allowed with conditions, and uses with an S require special exception approval by the BZA. The uses embold are only allowed in the zoning district it is listed under. The applicant's proposed landscaping and horticultural use is an allowed use with conditions in the requested rural agricultural AG8 zoning district. If the rezoning map amendment is approved, all uses allowed within rural agricultural AG8 will be allowed. So this includes the landscaping and horticultural services, outdoor recreation and entertainment, outdoor shooting range, communication towers, et cetera, would be allowed. So the current and requested zoning districts allow for primarily agricultural uses and single-family residences. In the requested AG8 zoning district, the dimensional standards would remain the same, with the exception of the minimum lot areas and minimum lit's. And the requested AG8 zoning district would result in a reduction in density. Therefore, this criteria is met. In the staff response, for this criteria covers previously mentioned information such as the use differences, dimensional standards, differences, and density reduction. This criteria is met. Approval criteria C and D are not applicable. Two of the approval criteria having been met, staff recommends approval on that basis. And no public input was received for this request, and the meeting was noticed as required.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Laura, I'll do the applicant. Daniel Berryman? And then after Daniel, Laura Berryman?
I'm Daniel Berryman, 967 Cottingham Drive in Mount Pleasant, where I live. I have a landscape company for over 11 years now on River Road, but the property that I'm on does not convey for. on does not convey for landscape, and so it was brought to my attention. And so trying to find a piece of property, zoning people have been great with helping us when I have questions of, will this convey? So this property looks good, that we service Kiowa, downtown Charleston, there's a lot of our communities that we service. And so it puts us in a great location for meeting both areas. And so, yeah, we're looking hopefully for the approval of this piece of property for us, so we can continue business. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Laura? Oh, sorry. Did you have a question?
I do. It would also be a question with, for staff as well. So essentially, feels like a down zone.
Right? Correct.
There's one caveat that stands out to me that I'd like some clarification on. Under the AG 8 zoning, there would be a conditional allowance for outdoor recreation and entertainment. Can you please clarify a little on that entertainment aspect? Taking into consideration that the adjoining properties next to it are AGR, which does not allow for that entertainment aspect.
Yeah, let me pull up the Zeldar.
Andrea Marshack, can you pull that, yeah, from the definitions?
It still have to get event permits and stuff.
So they could get event permits, so my question would be, how would that affect the neighboring residential homes that do not have that right?
So you can, under the current zoning, someone could ask for a special events permit as well.
Under the AGR?
Yes, yes. You're allowed up to six.
I didn't see outdoor recreation, entertainment there.
Yeah, so it's different. Outdoor recreation, entertainment has a specific definition. Special events are allowed in nearly all of our zoning districts, up to six per year. Each one is on a case-by-case, specific permit basis.
So this is different, just a regular.
Right. So, did you find the definition, Andrew?
I'm getting there.
Okay. All right. Yep.
So I've got the...
But we'll, when Andrew gets there, we'll read the definition so you can see the different types. Or it might be in chapter six as listed as...
It's subject to conditions. Betated land use buffer of not less than 50 feet from any property in an agricultural, residential, or office zoning district, except where such property line up butts a street, in which case a front setback established for the zoning district shall apply. And if it is established in connection with an outdoor shooting range, it shall have a setback of not less than 100 feet from any property in an agricultural.
You're going too fast for me to keep up with.
Basically, it's got a 50-foot setback unless it is, I'm sorry, buffer, unless it's an outdoor shooting range, and then it's got a 100-foot buffer.
Is there a minimum lot size for it?
Well, it would just be the AG 8 lot size.
Okay. So is that like outdoor concerts?
No, that's special events. Let me get to the definitions.
Four-wheelers.
Right, I mean...
Bird watching, four-wheelers.
Does chapter 12 have a definition?
I'm trying to pull it up. My computer is being slow.
I've got the definition here, if you want me to read it.
Yes, if you can read it when, that'd be great.
So recreation and entertainment outdoor use participatory and spectator-oriented recreation and entertainment uses conducted in open, partially enclosed, or screened facilities excluding any sexually oriented businesses. This includes, but is not limited to amusement parks, fairgrounds, racer-go-kart tracks, and sports arenas.
Which by default, some of those have to have quite a large acreage to meet parking and everything else.
So would like a wedding venue fall in that category?
No, that would be a special events.
Yeah, that would be special.
That's a different use.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Given that this outdoor venue option becomes available with this down zoning, but it is with conditions, what sort of conditions could one?
That's what Andrew was reading.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the 50-foot minimum buffer. And then on top of that, whatever development requirements are required in our ordinance, like other landscaping, parking requirements, those types of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Laura, did you want to?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm Laura Berryman. I live at 967 Cottingham Drive in Mount Pleasant. I just wanted to add that this is a 31-year-old landscaping business. It's not an entertainment business. And that most of the, many of the properties around are also AG 8. They're not just AGR. Thank you.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
Second up.
Okay. Any further discussion? Looks like you can call the roll.
Commissioner Lasain?
Yea.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pelatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
County Council will hear this request at their public hearing on September 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in council chambers, and again at their September 25th, 2025 Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at 5:00 PM. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is SBDV-03-24-02743, a subdivision plat application taking one existing lot and creating a total of two lots at TMS number 614-09-00-095, 1325 Leben Road?
Leben.
Leben? Leben Road? A property within 300 feet of the 10-mile historic district.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Kohn. I'm a Planner 1 with Subdivision. So we have SBDV application 02743 for planning commission date, subject property TMS number Proposal to take one existing lot and create two lots.
Is nobody's here to speak, right?
There we go. A little technical user error, I guess. Future land use, here we can see this future land use for the property. Urban, suburban, cultural, community protection. And then we have the current zoning. It is zoned MHS, low-density manufactured home. The current zoning shown here, you can see the parcel is inside in that hatching for MHS. An aerial view showing the parcel. And then we have the 10-mile historic district in the pink, and the buffer, the 300-foot buffer in this blue. The FEMA flood zone map showing AE 12. And then here we have site photos for Zocoma Drive, looking at the property and directly across. Zocoma Drive looking to the left and to the right. Leben Road looking at the property and directly across, and then to the left and to the right for Leben. The restrictive covenants was received from property owners stating there were no restrictions on the property. Received a list of TMS numbers and addresses in 2020 from the HOA president of Copahoe subdivision that cannot be subdivided due to the covenants. This parcel is not included in the list of the TMS numbers or addresses, and is not bound by the covenants as it is not within the HOA. Here we have the final plat showing the subdivision. And SE State Law Section 6-29-340, functions, powers, and duties of local planning commissions, be regulations for the subdivision or development of land and appropriate revisions thereof, and to oversee the administration of the regulations that may be adopted as provided in this chapter. Section C, an official map and appropriate revision on it showing the exact location of existing or proposed public street, highway, and utility rights of way, and public building sites, together with regulations to control the erection of buildings, or other structures or changes in land use within the rights of way, building sites, or open spaces within its political jurisdictions, or a specified portion of it as set forth in this chapter. Charleston County Historic Preservation Ordinance, Section 21-6, a subdivision plat application reports. The purpose, to encourage the preservation of the historic character of historic properties and historic districts. Preliminary and minor subdivisions plat applications as defined in the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, for historic properties/districts and properties located within 300 feet of the historic properties/districts, must be evaluated by the commission prior to final determination by Charleston County Planning The commission evaluation evaluates each subdivision plat application subject to Section 21-6 subdivision plat application reports for compliance with the cultural resource element of the comprehensive plan. The commission shall provide a report on the application to the planning commission that addresses whether and how the application is or is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the cultural resource element of the comprehensive plan. A majority of the HPC members present and voting are required. The commission shall not defer a subdivision plat application. HPC can't approve, deny, or defer subdivision applications, and notice in newspaper posted with community interest. Charleston County Comprehensive Plan 3.4.3 Cultural Resources Element Goals. Here we have the criteria, CR 1 through 5 shown here, CR 5 through CR 10, CR 11 through CR 15. And Historic Preservation Commission reports, seven out of the eight members present of the Historic Preservation Commission stated the proposed subdivision is not consistent with the cultural resource element of the comprehensive plan, citing inconsistencies with the element goal statement and strategy CR 1, CR 3, CR 7, and CR 9. The element goal, cultural, historic, and archaeological resources, unique settlement patterns of traditional Low Country communities such as historically African-American communities, and family settlements, and traditional activities, such as sweetgrass basket making should be preserved and protected from potential negative impacts of growth and development. CR 1, continue to promote historic preservation and enhance the county's Historic Preservation Ordinance. CR 3, continue to work with communities along the Gullah-Gi Chi corridor to preserve the unique settlement patterns and community character, including historic property/district designations, community plans, and overlay zoning districts. CR 7, continue to protect rural historic landscapes by ensuring development is in character with inherent rural attributes. CR 9, continue to coordinate with residents, adjacent jurisdictions, outside agencies, nonprofit organizations, and others with expertise in historic preservation to implement planning, zoning, and other techniques to protect historic communities and neighborhoods in other areas of cultural significance. Staff recommendation, the application complies with all requirements of the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval. Public input, as of July 16th for Historic Preservation Commission meeting, zero people spoke in support of the request, zero people spoke in opposition of the application at the meeting, eight comments in opposition, one petition in opposition with 69 signatures, and one general comment. As of today, for the planning commission meeting, no comments in support or opposition were received as of August 7th. And notifications for application 02743, 281 notification letters were sent to individuals on the Historic Preservation in East Cooper area interested parties list, as well as property owners within 300 feet of the subject parcel on June 27th of 2025. Additionally, this was noticed in the post and courier on June 27th, 2025, and signs were posted on June 26th, 2025.
Can I ask for the speaker? Cassie Hess?
All right, good afternoon. My name is Cassie Hess. I live at 1327 Leben Road, unincorporated Charleston County, and I'm a direct neighbor to the lot here today being discussed, and I serve on the board of the Copahoe View HOA. I'm here today to ask you to deny this proposal for subdivision. Just a few weeks ago, as we just covered, the Historic Preservation Commission voted seven to one that this plan is inconsistent with the character and goals of the 10-mile community. That's a powerful statement, and from the body that is tasked with protecting this historic area. If the planning commission sets aside their finding, the 300-foot protective barrier or buffer around the 10-mile historic districts becomes meaningless, and our preservation policies risk losing credibility. As an HOA board member, my duty is to protect the rural, low-density character that our covenants and restrictions were intended to preserve. And I could clarify in that. However, developers like this applicant, Grantham Homes, have found loopholes in both the covenants and restrictions, county zoning, and they have the money to bring to the table to maximize density regardless of neighborhood impact. We are in the process of discussing and seeking zoning changes for Copahoe View, from mobile home subdivision to something that offers real protection, but we need your help to prevent damaging precedents in the meantime. As a direct neighbor, I know firsthand that this lot is low-lying, and it already floods during ordinary rains like today. After tree removal, which I do believe was done without the required, following the required process for protective barriers, the risk of flooding neighbors like myself has only increased. If the subdivision moves forward, I ask you please at a minimum, require strict storm-water controls so floodwaters are not pushed onto neighboring homes. Today, you have the opportunity to demonstrate that our buffers and historic protections are real, and they're not just symbolic, and that history and community voices matter. I do urge you again to deny this application and set a positive precedent for balanced growth and resilience. And I did send in a letter, but I was sick, and it was past the deadline, so I'm here today.
Just a quick question. Is, does the neighborhood have a problem with the style of home, or being subdivided?
It's the density. This lot is .39 mile, or .39 acres, and if the overlay from 10-mile, which is S3, applies, requires one-acre lots.
No, it's, S3 requires a 12,500 square foot lot, not one acre.
Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to make...
Still don't think it would meet. I am very much learning all of these things very quickly.
So it's basically the density is the neighborhood's concern?
It's density, but it's also, I've spent a lot of time in 10-mile community, and been watching what's been happening there. You guys are probably well aware, and this is an opportunity to show that the 300-foot buffer means something. Right? This is, there's only a few lots that will apply in the 10-mile around Leben Road, and Perrywinkle, and the rest are on the other side, on Beehive and Theodore.
What's a, I'm confused about, what's a 300-foot buffer?
So the 300-foot buffer is from the boundary of the historic district itself. So 10-mile is a historic district, it has a boundary to it. The 300-foot buffer is from the boundary outward to the adjacent parcels.
So across the street.
Right, it can cross the street, you're right, you're right.
Okay, but you're outside the buffer.
She's a...
It's in the buffer.
It's in the buffer, but outside of the district.
Okay.
There's a 300-foot buffer that surrounds the district, right.
They're in the buffer.
They're in, this parcel is in the buffer, not in the district.
I'm still confused.
Okay. I mean, so if you... So if you, can you go? Do we have a map? Go ahead and show it. Do you see, do you see the map here that Chris has up? In the pink is the actual historic district. In the shaded areas that are sort of curvilinear, and they don't follow an actual boundary, that's 300 feet outside of the actual district. So the district has, everything that gets developed in the district goes to Historic Preservation Commission, including houses. In the buffer, it's just the subdivision.
And site plan.
And site plan, and commercial, right. Not the actual house, right. So a house that gets built anywhere in that buffer would not go to Historic Preservation Commission. The way the ordinance is written, only the act of the subdivision been residential.
It looks like that the, if you, right above the pink, the historic district, those lot sizes are basically the same as what is going to be subdivided.
Correct.
So I guess the question is, how is it not, I'm not, I'm just questioning on how the character is changing, at least from the Historic Preservation Committee. It didn't really define what, how it was changed, they just said it was changing, and yet you have houses that are right there that back up to it.
And also, the lot right below it is about the same size as if the one on the corner was subdivided.
Right, right.
If I may?
I said this.
We're getting, I think we, Mark might get on us. We're having a lot of discussion without a first and a second. So it might be good to do that.
Do we have a motion?
We finish with the.
Well, yeah. Well, okay.
I'll put forth a motion. Like to put forth a motion to approve?
The?
Second.
Planning Commission's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a second, okay.
So what is the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve?
To say yes. And you approve.
So staff's recommendation is to approve it because it meets all the requirements in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Right. I just want to make sure when you say Planning Commission's recommend, you're not talking about Historic Preservation Commission recommendation. Okay.
Well, that's what I meant.
Okay. I think that Mr. Lassane, are you wanting to approve the subdivision, not necessarily approve the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation?
For the record, there is no recommendation from the Historic Preservation. They have simply provided you guys a report on consistency versus inconsistency. I believe staff made a recommendation to approve, and without speaking out of turn, I believe that is what Commissioner Lassane is referring to.
That is correct. My recommendation would be for approval based on staff's recommendation for.
Approval.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, legal department as well.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. All right. So where were we? Okay, so this lot is the same size as, the subdivided lot will be the same size as some of the surrounding lot.
So you can see it better on this, on the slide that Lynn has up right now. What's bordered in red, the corner lot of Leben and Tacoma? What is that?
Tacoma?
Tacoma, sorry. Yeah. Leben and Tacoma, that's the subject parcel that's being subdivided. If you look at the parcels, it was brought up at the upper part of the slide, the smaller lots. Those lots are roughly the same size as the proposed subdivided, after it was subdivided. And also, the lot right below it that's touching it is narrow, which would be close to the same size as if that corner lot was subdivided. That's what was brought up, I think, as a comparison.
Can I add to the conversation? Because that's not unincorporated Mount Pleasant, though. That's Wando Forest, which is Mount Pleasant and annexed into Mount Pleasant. So it was done before the Historic Preservation Commission had established 10 Mile as a historic district. So the timing of things.
Right. Well, we're just, we're just noting, we're just identifying what exists, regardless of when it was done. Right. Yes?
So I can appreciate the Historic Preservation Committee's, you know, efforts. At the same time, there is an underlying zoning that allows for uses, and it seems like the subdivision would fit within that zoning. So I would encourage, you know, these historical communities, if they wish to have additional protections that maybe don't fit with the current zoning, to continue to pursue overlay districts to better define what they're looking for, because it's difficult to reconcile, you know, protection based on the language and the cultural resources elements of the comp plan with the rights that are inherent with a piece, a zoning of a current property. They're not asking for a zoning change. They, you know, want to subdivide within the current use.
And the other thing to realize is that we are the deciding body for this. This does not go to county council. What we do is final. If that makes any difference to any of you. Okay. Any further discussion? Well, when the 10 Mile overlay district is done, is that, would that affect any, would that affect this? No, it would not, okay.
No, I think, and the speaker said it. If they want something different than what the zoning ordinance allows from a subdividing or any other use inside the area of the 300-foot or elsewhere out in the Copahoe development, the way to do that is through the zoning ordinance. Like what we've done with 10 Mile with rezoning to S3 from R4.
Can I just make, just make a comment? I agree with Historic Preservation that this bears no relation to the historic character of the area. But I would also say that the historic character of the area is, given what's already been done to 10 Mile and all around it, it almost doesn't exist anymore, except for in some very small pockets. And I agree with Joel that if they would like something different, they need to come forward and ask for it, right? And it's within the urban growth boundary. And Luke, I'm always thinking about where should we build and where shouldn't we build, given the fact that there's been so much built around here. I don't like it, but I would be inclined to say yes for this one, despite the fact I don't like it.
Yeah, I mean echoing everything here, obviously, they're entitled to subdivide this, in my opinion, since it meets the current zoning. And I always think about myself, if I were the property owner, I purchased this property, I had this entitlement, and then something that seems arbitrary keeps me from doing that, even though the zoning code would say that I am entitled to that, it would bother me. But my, my question for staff, or I don't know if there's been anything in this, because it's been said that, like, what, what is, like, besides the cultural resource elements that seem very vague, is there anything a little more substantial, specifically in terms of, like, what makes these lot layouts historic? So it talks about, I believe, cadastral, unique patterns in the way that these lots are platted. And I personally don't see that. They've been subdivided over time. Everything's been subdivided over time. Has there been kind of like a character assessment, or are there talks about a character assessment in terms of what specifically makes these plats unique that I'm just not seeing? Or has there not been a character assessment? And we really are, like, hanging our hat on the cultural resource elements.
Well, as far as the district itself goes, there, the, first of all, let me back up for, in September, you will be seeing the overlay zoning district for the 10 Mile Historic District, after years of working with, going out in the community and getting feedback. The first step of that was to rezone a portion of the 10 Mile District from R4 to S3, and that was done at the request of county council, because it was becoming more and more apparent that the R4 minimum lot sizes was not acceptable to the community as far as preserving their historic nature. And that S3 zoning district is actually the zoning district that was identified 25 years ago as the zoning district that belonged, it was created for the settlement communities in Charleston County. So nearly all of the settlement communities in the county are zoned S3. At the time, 10 Mile was, at their request, was zoned R4. They've now seen that that's not what they wanted. It was, it's zoned S3. The overlay zoning district is the next phase or step. It was relatively simple to change the R4s to the S3s, because those zoning districts exist in the county. The overlay zoning district is a customized zoning, and it has taken that S3 and a couple of other things and tweaked them a little bit, including lot coverage, and you'll see all this in September, lot coverage and previous area and building coverage, and other things as well, uses. After, the 10 Mile community is also working on an area character analysis, which will be helpful on the architectural styles of the actual homes. So that will be very helpful to the Historic Preservation Commission when they review and approve any of the homes' vertical construction that's done on the properties. But the overlay zoning district is addressing things, as I said, like building coverage and massing. And a couple other uses as well. You'll see it all in September.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the current zoning. It says low-density manufactured home subdivision district. How does that differ from the S3 that they are wanting to?
The S3, the overlay district is pretty much following the S3 minimum lot sizes. Like I said, they, there are a couple of tweaks to that. They'll have a lot, a building depth-to-width ratio, so that there's not a lot of long, long skinny houses on narrow lots. The 12,500 square foot minimum lot size in S3 is completely different than this MHS minimum lot size, which is 5,000?
Yeah, 5,000.
Yeah, yeah.
I think so.
6,000? Yeah.
But even once that is done, this is in the buffer, so it wouldn't apply to this area?
Correct. That's correct. So if, if the areas that surround historic districts want something different than what the current zoning allows, then that zoning needs to change as well. Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Could someone, could we reiterate the motion?
Yes, I put forth a motion for approval based on staff's recommendation for approval for the subdivision.
All right. Want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lassane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell? Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
This is the final decision of the Planning Commission. If any person with a substantial interest in a decision of the Planning Commission chooses to appeal this decision, they may do so to the Circuit Court of Charleston County. Such appeals shall be filed within 30 calendar days after today's date.
That's it?
If there is no further business, this meeting of the Charleston County Planning Commission stands adjourned. The Planning Commission will hold its next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, September 8th, beginning at 2:00 PM in council chambers.